Oh, this is blinking.
Yeah. Um, the lock needs very applied.
Okay.
Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting order and ask everyone to rise, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We're going to jump right in. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? Okay, moving on to celebrations. Adam.
And board members, two celebrations to review both from the website. The first one is, as we know, we talked about it in our last meeting, the opening of Mary Marshall Tennis Facility. To be able to post a story including a bunch of perspectives of the facility. So, as you know, I think we watched the video of the ripping cutting last meeting, but we are now pretty much fully completed. Here's some joint ceiling, which is talking of some of the gas in certain areas that will be done here in the near future. Windscreen's up, so end of last meeting, so it's pretty much done. Kind of put a chronological view on the story of kind of the construction as it took place, kind of look at the progress of that. So, since this is the first time we're formally talking about its completion, we want to acknowledge the hard work by Randy Weingartz, Paige Bolton, especially his application, successful application for USD grant, the largest grant they have ever given out, to support a construction project like this. And obviously, our partners have French Associates and a personal company who managed this, followed through to its completion. So, a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into this. This goes back ninety, ninety years. Ignoring that we had a significant issue with this facility and with the construction materials that were invested in this, the product appearance that should last there for many, many, many decades to come. I would put this right up there with any other high school-level facility I think we could come up with. So, our kids deserve it, community supported it. I had a buddy of mine a couple of weekends ago, very digressing a bit, but he's a coach of another school in the area, we'll go unnamed. So, they were playing a tennis match Saturday, and he invited me over to hang out with them all a bit during the matting, the throwing spin. It was cool, they had to spend about two hours praying about, like, the seven of the Lord, and he got the thought, like, I know, I know. So, I think the word's good now. But anyway, thank you to all involved. It's a really cool project, probably able to see that. See you too. Our second story, again, we talked about it, I think, maybe previously, but we've been able to post it to the website now. It's just a recap of homecoming. I would say of all the homecomings I've been here for, I mean, this is definitely the highest energy. Just the mound school spirit we saw, not just at the high school, but throughout, throughout the district, which is really impressive. As I think I mentioned, actually, I think I put it in my community newsletter on Friday, the reporter that was covering the pep rally. It said, if you've never seen an environment like that at a high school. So, I think it was an outstanding representation throughout the week, the spirit days, special activities that went on. And then, obviously, culminating in the parade, the football game, band concert, and the dance on Saturday for high school kids. So, overall, just a really fun week. Really appreciate that. Our high school school government advisors, the members of our high school school government organized a lot of that, really cooked the initiative. By all accounts, did a great job leading everything this year, so very impressed with that student leadership at the high school as well. And like I said, just an awesome reputation. Those were the only two website celebrations, obviously, given before and across a number of positive fronts. Our staff has been very hard on all different types of initiatives, and I see that we've done a great job so far this year. There'll be more celebrations to come when we get in. Any questions that can arise?
Okay, moving on. We do not have an education update, so it's going to have its report.
Right, we have upcoming items. We have a regular meeting scheduled on the twentieth of October in the finance facility. Maybe meeting on the third of November. There are a couple of upcoming special events in the very near future, and then this week, I just want to make sure the board is aware of. The first is Walk the School Day. It's back after the, I think, I think before the last time we did it. That'll be on the morning of October ninth. The off-the-plate rate between our elementary schools and our PPSA and the local police department. And then, the second, Pass the Torch event, scheduled for this Friday at seven at the home football game. Last year was the first year we did that, but if you didn't see it or familiar, that's where we literally pass from one generation to the next. The kindergartners are out on one side of the field, and the high school seniors on the other side. They meet in the middle, seniors give them a token, literally passing the torch on to our new generation of hornets. So, it's a really cool event to be at, and there's a lot of participation, even though that's the first day of our fall break. Kindergarten parents asking me about it also, so looking forward to that on Friday. Moving on to bond updates. First, before us, as you probably saw when you parked this evening, softball instruction is continuing and still on pace for the March, March slash April. Going there in complete the date, I think, five March. Weather's obviously been helping considerably, but it's fun to kind of do a drive-through every couple of days and just kind of see the progress. That's definitely a lot of it. We worked, last year or last week, we had a pretty Monday afternoon looking at touring options for both Explorer, Middle School, and High School. So, invested a lot of time, we tried to pick out different color options, different materials. The, I think we're making progress, there's some samples that have been sent out, so I think we'll continue those, share those with their staff. But we're getting there, and again, that should be, well, the point for Explorer will take place when that school project will be constructed. But for the middle of the high school, we're going to get back and do the next summer. We're also making progress on band instruments. Not but the band directors last week, when they're going to close, they have to finalize instruments. It's sort of important to sharing that process in their selection here in the next month or two. We will learn a little more about the equipment involved with the full H-MAC project later this evening, so we'll cover that for the moment. And then, one of the big accomplishments we've done is updated the school renderings for Explorer Elementary. So, if I see those up, I'll kind of walk the board with a different perspective that come with that project. So, the first slide is the perspective of looking at the entrance to Explorer Elementary from across the street. Some of the features you'll see are the raised sidewalk, which is obviously served as a way to slow traffic down, but also a pretty noticeable barrier for students and families, parents across from the parking lot to the main entrance. You also see that color selection, which was a major component of the design process, has been finalized. So, you'll see the scene throughout all the pictures. The green is used where the entrance is, and so it's designed to kind of pull people in to help identify where those entrances are, so you can see the main entrance has that green color. We finalized the naming convention last week using the same as we did for the high school when that main entrance was built. So, you'll have the name of the school and the main office, and that matches the best deal and oning that we've put in at the high school several years ago. And then, just little things, like a lot of discussion over the address to go, or is it not a layer vertebrae itself? All little details that kind of get worked out. You also see the color selection for the metal paneling. That was kind of a big decision, and I was fortunate to have a lot of feedback from that at Explorer. We ended up going with a color called zinc gray, which kind of ties into the Williams' color scheme. I've seen a lot more gray than been used in our design over the last several years, and this color scheme fits right in. There were four finalists. I think zinc gray was everybody's first or second choice, other than me, which is my other objective for the decision. I think it's also the cheapest coloring, so there's another benefit to going with that. All right, you're on the second slide. This is just a perspective from looking east on the new drop-off lane to the staff parking lot to the left of the.
So, can I, okay, so I'm going to tie back up to the other picture. Where, can you give me a location of where is this front entrance? Is this going to look out towards like where the business office is and where that?
I think you'll see it a little more clearly in a future slide when we get more like a bird's eye view, but it's facing out towards what is now the staff parking lot.
Okay, facing north.
Yeah, one more. So, second slide, now again, you're going to see the vehicle traffic heading from west to east. And the staff parking lot there off in the distance. Third slide is flipping around and looking back forth to the west, pretty much the same perspective. We're kind of standing on the sidewalk of where the new staff parking lot will be. You'll see there's also that raised sidewalk for staff across, across the street, where there's a drop-off lane. Going to the next slide, it's kind of backing out a little bit and looking south. And then, you see the main entrance, and then you see the right there, and then the classroom and the.
So, Adam, are we losing any parking that we maintain this type of the fact that we have, it's just a little bit of a picture?
So, we are not losing parking, but we are changing where it's located, if that makes sense. So, the, it's not exactly a one-to-one, but more or less current drive where the parking is is roughly where the new drop-off lane will run. And then, the parking for staff and stuff like this will be for the north of that. All right, go to the next slide. It's kind of backing out. Again, looking west at the path that cars will take as they turn onto the drop-off lane from Highland Street. Parking lot there in the front is the, would be the new central office parking and potentially serve for a parking for some of the staff members and little hornets as well. Again, you'll see a raised sidewalk there, cross over from one side to the other. Even though it doesn't really look like it, that's the central office, administrative building there, with the foreground, just the heavenly windows. And the playground's out there, but don't worry yourself, that's not what it looks like. All right, going to the next slide. There's been a lot of work done on this design, so I'll bring a couple of highlights up here. So, now you're looking along Riverside, looking west. The, or looking east, sorry. Looking east, so you'll see the major changes we've done with the crosswalk here is trying to discourage folks from traveling across the east side of the intersection on Highland. So, if you look to the far side of the cars, they're parked there, you'll see there's no crosswalk there. And we removed the, it's included the bowl curves, because there's no obvious crossing area there for students or pedestrians to try to stumble into. This was actually a suggestion of the city to kind of make it really obvious, not be crossing the street in that location. The sidewalk was another addition there, so again, from Riverside, if you were walking towards the school. I'm sorry, you're on Highland, walking towards the school, you can see that the sidewalk cuts in there, and then it connects into the raised sidewalk crossing with the central office parking across the street. So, that sidewalk indicates, again, you can keep walking straight, there's nowhere to cross, and you have to go through the raised sidewalk and cross there. And then, there's just little changes, like some of the crosswalks or some of the sidewalks that enter into the street that cut half, so like half of it, it's like a bowl curve indicating you can continue to walk in that direction, and the other half drops down into a VDA ramp indicating it contains the crosswalk, so you know that's where you should cross. You'll also see that we recruited a construction worker here to sort those across.
So, before we move on, can I just, so where this parking lot is in the back is where the house is that we own, we're going to be tearing down?
Rough.
Rough. And then, there is a house here on this corner.
Right.
It's just not there. So, are we, when we do this cut, are we cutting into any of their property or anything that we don't need to?
All the, all the changes with the other, with our.
So, for students that want to score, who can no longer class, where would they be dropping off? Would they be going to the three-four entrance, or three-four-five entrance, or would they still be, be going down towards that?
So, you're talking like we're locker station, would they? We haven't, we haven't had those conversations yet of where that would go. There's plenty of options, if that's good, we just, we haven't gotten to that, that point. But the next thing is there's maybe more viable options than we had at home.
And will Discovery and Explorer be dropped on a different location? Like, Discovery's will still be kind of on their side, and Explorer will go down here, or they'll also?
So, all the car, all the vehicle traffic will head down this road, and they'll probably have different entrances that students will enter into the buildings from.
But they'll all be moved out?
For the morning. And during dismissal, they'll all go to the same location.
So, really, where that tan car is on Highland going towards Church Street? That theoretically, in the mornings, there shouldn't be anybody at that stop sign.
Yeah, theoretically.
Yeah.
The only, the only part is going through that crosswalk should be Discovery staff going down their line.
Yes, so.
And buses.
At the end of the day, it would be buses, yeah, cars.
The crosswalk on Church, we will, if we found the other side of the. If on the side of the, of the house, and they would have to be switched over to, you know, for the.
Not necessarily. You could, you could walk all the way down Highland on the school side of the sidewalk.
Or you can stay on that sidewalk.
Yeah, that side up would take a lot of.
But then you're crossing, if you stay in that sidewalk, that takes you down there, then you're crossing in front of all those cars that are dropping off like that.
You'll, you'll be crossing at the identified raised sidewalks.
Is that better, I'm trying to, what have done for this raised side?
Um, yeah, so if you go back to the beginning, well, actually, the first slide is a good example of it, the very first slide. So, you can kind of see it's a, it's a, the path is elevated, and there's a crosswalk there at the top of that, that will be good.
Okay, all this time is staff, it's just a terrible.
It's a bomb, yeah, with a pipe though.
But what would you feel if it popped?
I would hope that it would be designed where you'll notice it, but.
No, I didn't mean that. I just, that is, it's served as a warning system.
Yeah, it's to the whole point. Yeah, it's clearly, it's clearly identifiable if anybody wanted to go out and get a little drag race. That would not probably walk in the park. So, it's going to be high enough that it's, it's a deterrent and a noticeable way of people parked down at a very slow speed, and also a clear indication of a safe place to cross. This is a bad improvement over what we have now, which our kids just kind of filtering out of exit near the locker station, especially those who walk them on their own, and they just kind of on their own, like, wade across the staff parking lot into the neighborhoods on the far side, and so you know, if you're driving out, you really, and that's why I stand there a lot of days too. It's, you never know, if you're trying to drive out or back up, it's just going to walk across two cars, across the parking lot, and it's, it's very. This, this will be a much better system. All right, let's see. So, I'm going to go down to the slide that just looked at, and then go more and more. And so, now you're looking west, and you can see a good bird's eye view of the staff parking lot. There's a foreground there, you have the exit of the drop-off who heading out onto Church Rowley. To the left, you see the deep soccer field that was built to the side of the addition.
And our playground, I mean, I know it's not in this picture, but playground, the one, like, Discovery Playground stays?
Yeah, Discovery's playground should be fine. It's a large playground, we'll get a little bit, and you'll see a little bit of that. The last slide, the presentation, when we get the shot of the ring, of the ring of the school. So, going to the next slide, this would be if you were standing on Church Rowley, looking out at the exit.
That maybe is the sidewalk?
Yes.
I thought it was a sidewalk.
Are we going to be tearing down the house on that one side going out to that?
The greenhouse? So, that, we're, so we're under, that's under discretion right now, so obviously, part of it is price, like, it's going to have a cost associated with that, right? So, is that something that we can afford within, within the bond? The other component, though, is there's going to be a large amount of material that needs to be stored during the construction process. And trying to find a location, and a lot of stuff, and where's all that stuff going to go? So, the ideal solution, if we can figure it out from a price standpoint, that, that house and the garage get torn down, and that becomes essentially the storage area for all that material that's going to be used during the construction process. So, that's our option A right now. We have a B and C as well, but assuming we can work with the budget, that's what we'd like to see. And then, get rid of those structures that really need to go. And then, you have a practical use of that space.
So, if we don't, if we can't get rid of those, if the cost is way too high, is there enough room there to put the two lanes, like?
Well, no, it's not. So, so those houses won't interfere with the actual project, as you're seeing it with the images. That's not where this, this exit is coming out at. So, the, the, the main issue for the, the house, the greenhouse, is one, it could potentially be used as a construction entrance and exit during the construction process. You have to, again, see if that would work out. And then, the second one is use it, use that space to store the materials that are going to be used for construction.
Okay, but I'm confused, because aren't cars coming out here in between that greenhouse and the other house, the garage?
This is burned down.
So, where are they, where are those cars coming out then? I thought the cars are coming out, going to Rowley Row.
They are, but it's past where the house is.
They're going to go all the way down?
Yeah.
Okay.
This goes, this goes the full extent, and there's not a, we don't have the schematic designs, because this is designed to be a rendering just to see like what the building's going to look like, like the bird's eye view, like all those kind of like architectural things are going to come down the road. But yeah, it's all, it's all the way down. It's a very large area that the project's picking up. So, again, just to recap, so there's, there's no confusion. The greenhouse is not a factor for the construction, as you see it here laid out in the picture. It's only kind of a side piece where we could potentially use that space, and the construction company could potentially use this space as a construction entrance. And that good, or, and or, it can be used as a storage, or, or material that's going to be brought in during the construction process. And if you can use that space, that's great, because then you get two things down at once, the structure that really need to go away. And then, you're actually using it for some practical purpose during, during the.
Can we get a two for one, to the yellow house and the greenhouse?
Yeah, you might be having a.
Have to talk to Andrew later on.
What about the fire department burning it down as practice?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, the neighbors that are not too far away from it, like, I mean, we, we can bring it up, but it's, it's kind of close to residential homes. And then, the last slide is looking at the school behind from the, from the Explorer Playground. Again, you can see the green highlighting those are entrances, so let's see if they're outside, and they're definitely their classrooms. Kind of pulled them back towards the place that they need to go, so. These would run, just so you know, it kind of makes sense, but the one furthest away would be third grade, kind of closest to the circle, current circle, and unfortunately, that would be the one that would fall down there. Uh, let's see, so there's two more slides, just another picture of the drop-off lane, the main entrance of the stadium. And then, the final slide, looking south, a way back at the entire project. I can kind of see all the colors put together there, so. Again, pointing this, just to kind of see what the color schemes are going to look like, and what the layout will look like. We'll get in more of the architectural perspectives here later on, but you can kind of see the progress that's made. The last time we looked at this, where it was just kind of like, more completed buildings, maybe you can see the color schemes in a little more detail than what it's actually going to look like. At least on the.
Any other question? Okay.
So, we're going to, like, I think, like, tomorrow, I think, actually, this is tomorrow, going to present the same slides of Explorer staff, so you can see how things are progressing. We've set something up to show at the preschool as well, so just, we're trying to stay proactive and keeping staff informed.
Very nice. Moving on to committee reports. Board policy, no games not here. Sarah, do you want to take this, or Adam?
So, we were brought up to date with the disciplinary disciplinary handbook updates, all of which we talked about in more detail later. Changed mention of textbooks in several policies, and the new can use a sentence that the current law policy, which is also something that we're going to be going over in a little bit, and consolidated several board meeting policies under the new. All of which will be discussed in just a minute.
And I am sorry.
We met recently, and unfortunately, as you know, we didn't have a budget. We met on October first, hoping that we would have a budget to discuss, but we did not. But we did have Dr. Noel Duval, who is the director of mental health wellness for the ISD, to, to several schools, actually, all schools, because the ISD to give services to students. So far, there's a hundred, it says a hundred and thirty-four, but I believe added that morning, there were two more added, so like, I think a hundred and thirty-six referrals for twenty twenty-one, and now they're up even more. Some of the things that were discussed was the professional development district staff, and some challenges that they see. The biggest is current consent by net stigma around mental health and the waitlist for students to receive services. Andrew Smith, superintendent of one, gave an update on the superintendent's roundtable. The cell phone ban is one that was discussed, and school safety, the law now requires common language in district emergency operation plans. So, because if there is an emergency in a local district, it does indicate that local police or fire are the ones to respond. Having universal language among everyone who's in the ISD is important to, to know what's going on. And look at control TV, we all know that control is land, and it's very challenging, but there looking at, add some professional development, add the control to the area. And then, the small budget update, and large district update to add to that. Any questions?
None, nothing.
Yes, please.
We had a, we hired Secure Environment Consultants, as you see, that's a firm that we've used for many years now to do our site assessments, vulnerability assessments, exercises, school safety and security exercises. We hired them to do EOP, emergency operations plan review, kind of keeping with what Sarah just briefed about changes of the law, to make sure that we were still compliant. We did really well. Debriefed with the evaluator last Monday. So, I think we're in good shape, but we're continuously looking at lessons learned, things that have gone wrong in our state or in the country, and making adjustments. So, it's a living document, improvement, and as far as the compliance, what's required, we were, we did really well.
Any other question? All right, moving on to discussion items. We have two lead requests. Is there any, Sarah or Adam, is there anything you want to say about the first one we have? Um, is there any, uh, Sarah or Adam, is there anything you wanna say about the first one we have, or Sarah?
Oh, hers is an unknown duration, like six weeks at the max, that she just got eligible about a year ago.
So hers is an unknown?
Yeah, maximum six weeks, she doesn't think it'll be that long, um.
Oh, okay.
However, she's a new hire, so she's not.
Um, and if she needs more, she knows she needs to come back and ask. Any questions about that one? Um, okay, next one for Michelle. Anything? So, I, but I just wanna make sure that I'm clear. She's asking to, she's on leave right now, she's asking to extend her leave until February seventeenth, or immediately upon medical approval to return to work, so.
Yes, so she is currently on FMLA. Um, it's unknown what her return date would be, it's been, right now it's expected to be February seventeenth. Um, if it's sooner, and we get the parents to bring her back, she'll come back sooner, if she needs an extension, she'll request another extension. Um, but once the FMLA, uh, is over with, the difference is number eleven, um, for approval required, so.
Um, and will she be using her sick days? Uh, to cover this, or is she taking unpaid? Cause it says I will be responsible for my insurance coverage to the extent of the agreement. Is that just when her time, her sick day and everything run out, she'll?
Yes, Sarah, I'm not sure how much of this is here.
There we go. About my.
But right now she's covered, we have what we need for her.
Yep.
Okay. Um, I will get them my other questions answered, but we can move these for a vote. I do appreciate both of these individuals getting this in, I know her leave is not due until November, that would put us in a really bad spot, because we have one meeting, one meeting in November, so if this would've came then right before the meeting, it wouldn't have been voted on until our one meeting in December, and that, uh, we are really trying to get staff away from that, cause that means a huge hardship for all of us. Um, next, I've, uh, I have a state field trip.
Yeah, I think at our, our last meeting, I kind of advised the board, there might be a couple others coming in. Uh, this is a new one, um, for student government, and, um, just step a little, cause it's new, a little bit longer to get, I think finalized. Uh, but, uh, Dr. Del and I will support this. And, um, bringing it to board for your approval.
Are they just gonna do some fundraisers? Yes, never mind.
Yeah, I don't know if they have reinforced it, I don't know exactly all the details, but they are gonna do some. Actually, the tumblines, I think, have already gone out, but I don't know, but, um, I'm not sure about the other.
Um, any questions about the fundraiser, or the, this trip? Okay, board policies. Uh, I'm not sure, can we start?
Thank you. For ten thirty-two, board powers, that's general powers, uh, we just changed textbook to encourage you on the cross, other policies that we have. Policy eleven eighty R, board committees, we redid committees and added a note regarding committee of the whole, changed up committee flavors to committee, removed R as it's no longer needed. Policy thirteen hundred, which is the meetings, this policy is a completely rewrite in. This also consolidates other other policies, which are as table redundant. Policy thirteen sixteen, I'm stating to the public, remove the rule as the other. Um, you'll see that in, uh, policy thirteen hundred. Policy fourteen ten, quote session, we've removed because it's also redundant, like it's slightly in thirteen hundred. Policy twenty-one twenty, responsibilities in the superintendent, swaps textbook curriculum again for sixteen. Policy forty sixty R, and we have a franchise. Conservation policies, suggested to remove these because they are outdated and not considered as. Policies that can be taken, oh, I'm sorry, stop me at any point in time, I got a question. Um, textbook adoption, instructional resources, there's a lot of textbooks that curriculum, and removed a sentence that was called confusion. Um, there was some discussion about the distinction curriculum versus material. Policy seventy-seven, sixty controversial issues, where you can add a section for a good to project to form a content. And policy eighty-nine, forty student methods can be put up, clarify, if the parent has to make their request, write into the council, please, it was not specified, and then the process is like.
Any question? Um, yeah, so seventy-three fifty is the curriculum policy that we've had, that I asked to go back to the policy committee. So right now we took out, looks like all textbook terms. So I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, cause where we get, um, where we've been getting tripped up is our English department and the different materials that they use. So if a teacher has a reading book list, regardless of how many books are on that list, and students have to pick, I don't know, say, three books from this list of, it could be fifty, it could be, I mean, Bob Duffy had like, what, five hundred books on his list, whatever that would be. Those books, and one student takes a book off that list and no one else does, that book needs to be, I, I know some of those books have been grandfathered in, but starting that, or once we vote on this, those books would have to come to the board to be approved. Correct?
Fifty books, I would say probably unlikely, if we look at it differently.
Okay, not the fifty books, one, so if I am an English teacher, and I have a list of books on this list, and there could, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know how many books are on the list. So I'm gonna hand that out, this syllabus out to the students and said, you are responsible for picking a book a semester from this list, and then you're going to, uh, uh, do a book talk with. Okay, that's one. If they want book number fifty-one, a new book that came out, or they found, or whatever, if they wanna add a book to that list, which someone might choose, someone might not choose, ten people might choose, one person might choose, whatever that might be, that one book needs to come to the board to be approved.
Hmm, well, I would say probably, I mean, it depends. We're not, we're not gonna end up with a number, cause that's not how.
Well, it's not a number, it's not, I mean, we have our English teacher, this is where we're, this is where we are getting what we're, this is what's really frustrating for me, because we walked through this policy, and we come back with still, well, it depends. I don't feel like when we're talking about curriculum, we can have it, it depends. Because then that's where we're getting tripped up when, when we're talking about curriculum. And I don't want this to get to a point where it's like, well, we like the book, so we're gonna say okay and not approve it, but we don't like the book, so now you gotta take it to the board. And that's where, that's what teachers are feeling. So I, we need to remove that. So, teachers, uh, it seems like our English teachers, there could be our science, math teachers, I don't know. I just know this is what migrated through English class, and it sounds like it's still happening. So teachers have a book list, kids get to choose a book. They, I'm just throwing out two. It could be four, it could be one, I don't know, but I'm gonna throw out two. So they have a book list, there are some classics, um, there could, like, the help was on one, I don't know. Like, there's books on a book list that the teachers personally have, they're personal to themselves, not all teachers have the same books, it's a book list, they have to pick two books from this list. Then, they could also have, here are five books, and you need to pick one book from these five books, and you're gonna meet in small groups and do this. And they all could be reading Romeo and Juliet. So we have three scenarios of how they're reading different books that kids have to read, and three different scenarios will probably have to present that they read the book. So at any point, starting when we approve this policy, if a teacher wants to add a book to either the personal book list, to the small book list that kids have to do, or the book that the whole class is reading, does that book need to come to the board in any three of those scenarios to be approved?
Do we have this discussion, we have this same discussion, we had this discussion around the teacher, what they're bringing up. We landed on their, the teacher, in whatever subject, they have to, one, know the material, and two, be able to support the material, it's a why they choose the material. It goes through different layers, it goes to the building and stuff, it goes to the curriculum chapter, and then finally it comes to the board.
But you're saying it comes to the board, so every one of those books is gonna come to the board? If they wanna teach that book, it has to come to the board? I'm not seeing anybody else but Sarah and Amanda Heather saying yes. Are we, like, are we all understanding that part, is that what this is?
I think maybe the student, yeah. There's no, there's no support in any other policy book for picking a number of books. So, I think at a certain point, you're gonna delve into resources where students are given some autonomy, once they're very large amount of options. And at that point, I think that's starting to develop into more of a, a resource, um, when there's so much choice involved. Teacher, not me and Dana, I mean, it's not, you know, there's a difference between picking one of the book lists, fifty or four.
But those are, but those would be different scenarios. I think this is where we, we ran into this exact problem. When we came to the board and we said, the personal book list, that you have fifty, I mean, again, Bob Duffy had some ridiculous amount of books on this list from all of his years of teaching and reading books, he would add books to this personal list. And it is, it is not every kid is gonna choose it, you might have one kid read a book, and, and one kid might read it every five years, but it's a very long list.
It's like saying, if you go on, um, I forget the name of it, the program that we used to have at the elementary for current events, and there's all kinds of articles. You know, you gotta pick one of those articles, it'll be about something, current events, and then, you know, media synopsis, or some of the names, politics, you know, on the, on the, uh, uh, it did track that, that this is not.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but we, I mean, and I'm gonna, I guess I'm just gonna lay it out on the table. We had a couple teachers come to us and say, I wanna read this one book, I wanna put it on my personal list. So went through that process, and was told, well, there's a better book out there. So technically, like, what, what we said in the past, and what I'm hearing we're saying right now, that one book they had wanna push on a book list, that kids could choose, not choose, ten kids could choose it, one kid could choose it, they could never choose it for the whole career of the teachers here. That is not curriculum, it does not need to come to us. But yet, we just told some English teachers last year, that's, that same scenario, that's curriculum, and you have to bring it to the board. So I'm getting, I'm getting really frustrated, because if either I'm, either I'm not understanding, or we're not saying the same thing, and we're back to confusion, and, or we let teachers have that autonomy, and they wanna read the book, whether we like it, whether we don't like it, or whatever, if it's going on a list of fifty books, if it's going on a list of fifty or like twenty-five, ten, whatever, that the people have to choose, they get to do that. So I'm not sure what we're saying. Amanda, same with.
It looks to me like in that scenario, it has to be approved by the board. If you, unless that layer of, cause it would be a resource.
The situation of the ALA department, I was clearly correctable.
Oh, no.
And they had the option to do that.
They did have the option to do it, but again, it was not a book that every student was going to read, it was going on like a personal book list.
It was going on a, it was going on their syllabus, in the list of four books, maybe five.
That's not what I'm.
And it was, uh, it was part of a singular unit, it's meant to use from one of the four or five books in that unit. For the protection of the teacher, administrators, and the board, when you're limiting the number of choices that you can read in your class to that number of books, that should be approved by the board. Otherwise, you're opening yourselves up to a lot of, uh, discretion that you have no oversight on. And when there is, uh, an issue with that very limited choice, it's gonna come back to the board anyway.
I understand that, but it was my understanding from, that it wasn't going on a book of four, that it was going on a book of their fifty list. So are we saying, so what is the number that we're throwing out there to say?
This session, should we say, we tend to less books, and we have the art considered curriculum, we need to come to the board, but I think we're, the discussion.
This'll work either, because you look at it, the board were hundreds of books, hundreds of trade books, as part of the elementary core reading program, hundreds. So it wasn't a number, like they, and you had the opportunity to review all of those books, you had the list, right? You had time, if you were so inclined to go through any of the books that were on that list. So, there, there's always gonna be, um, discretion. Um, that's why the administration is there to ensure that, or trying to provide, uh, guidance that protects the board, protects the district, ensuring that we have quality materials that are going to our students, that the board is approving of. Um, and looking at all similar policy materials, they all, this is actually more descriptive, uh, in nature than the others. The others are pretty much saying, uh, you know, via the superintendent, who obviously is taking recommendations from teachers, principals, curriculum director, um, brings curriculum to the board in a group of all. There's not really any descriptive, uh, language that I could find, uh, any of the main policy materials that kind of arrive at a, what a, a number of, of books or, or reading materials that are filed for. So there's always gonna be some discretion, um. You could have, uh, an art project, where the art teacher goes along and finds a, a project that they think might work really well for their students, uh, I don't know that, uh, that would probably be considered a resource. Uh, the principals should know about it and sign off on it, but you're not gonna bring, uh, art project to the board for emergency approval. So there's, there's always gonna be some discretionary layers, yeah. On the flip side, board list has an option, but it's, you know, you can always disagree, and it's an administrative made a choice if you don't agree with. You wanna approve something that they said, uh, whatever, not approved, whatever, I mean, it's always gonna end up back at the board at the end of the day, if there's, uh, a controversy or a different opinion, so.
I just think, I, I, I just personally, this is still murky, and we're still, it's, I, I don't know if we're all still having an understanding of what we're going to call curriculum, and what we're not.
It seems like the board, the board have the responsibility to approve the curriculum, and the curriculum is like the umbrella for what's in the content, what's taught. And that, there are some changes within there, if they haven't had principal approval, providing approval, um, you know, go through that process, it doesn't seem like that, that would be comfortable. I mean, if you have an approved practice in first, I mean, that shows that it's, that it's considered to be okay. I mean, cause if you're talking about every single book coming to board, that, I mean, that's.
No, I agree. I, I agree with you, it's just, again, I wanna be clear, if there is a book that a teacher wants to put on their individual, personal book list, but again, that's what?
What you're saying is not clear in here, because we don't really define clear, but that seems quite, um.
But if, it, but it, it happens. I'm sure your kids, when they took English, got a list of however many books, and they had to pick, pick a book out of that list to read. Got a list of however many books and they had to pick, pick a book out of that list to read. So if a teacher adds a book to that list, that not everybody's, I just want to make sure we're clear. That not every student is reading. We are not calling that curriculum. It's a resource and they can put that book on their personal list. We need to be clear on what that is because. And here we're saying, as of now, that doesn't have to come to us. And this was the discussion that we had before. Well, how many kids have to read the book? Does it have to be a book of four? Does it have to be a book of five? Is it on their personal book list? It, it's murky. And this is, I. I mean, if, if. I think for the last two or three years, we've been stumbling over this. And, uh, board members, myself included, some people who are not here, some people are here. Are unclear. This is the one policy that I feel like is pretty important when we're talking about a school and its curriculum. And yet we get ourselves into this situation where we're kind of unclear and administration says one thing and we say another and we think one thing and they think another. And I still think we're, we might have written for the wrong textbooks, but I still think it's murky. That's my personal opinion. We can move forward and, and even if you're to vote and.
We don't have to move forward though. We can.
Right, but if I'm the only one that thinks that there's like.
Well, there's two board members missing. So, I mean, yes, certainly. Or we can have a, a full board discussion when everybody is there at this event. I would like something to be placed certainly so that there is no confusion. But if there's confusion, I don't want to put something in place just to have something. There needs to be clarity around this. I agree with you and I don't think anybody else disagrees with you. Do we wait until we have full board here to have a full discussion? Or do we take it off, not vote on it, just bring it up for discussion? And that decision might be a.
Exactly. And I mean, Chris is the only one who wasn't. I mean, Dave's on the policy committee. I would assume that Dave is popped it over this. I guess I need to look what the.
I don't feel like the scenario you're talking about is clear either one way or the other. So we need to be clear about if people add books to a book list.
It does or does not?
It does not.
I'm just wondering how often does it happen? Like i- if, if a teacher gives out a book, a book list that's fifty books. They should be able to choose a book from that list. Why are we, why is there addition of another book?
I think they add, like if new book came out or they read the book, like this time goes on. Like, I don't know. I think, I'm not an English person. I'm trying to. Right, like the help.
Right, I, I understand that, but is that like the difference of a, you're reading a book. To do a report, that's considered curriculum? Cause if it's just a free read, like.
A free read and I don't know what they have to do. They might have to write a paper on it. They have to do a book talk. I don't, I, I don't know. Each teacher, that's kind of up to.
So yeah, I guess it's not clear.
Alright, so, um, if we're, are we comfortable with the other policies? Okay, I would like to pull this policy out. This is a seventy-three, seventy-three fifty. I'd like to pull this policy out and add it to the agenda for November. I will not be here in the next meeting in October. So I'll be here in November because I would like to. Just state, I guess, my concern. Again, I'm not going to be here forever, so, but I still feel like. Yeah, so let's move this for the November meeting. Have a discussion when everybody's here. We can then decide what we do or vote on it in December.
You know what I'm trying to point out, taking a big picture, right? We're getting to the point, we're not having any issues as an administrative team. So it's not at all. The, the big picture, what we're seeing more specifically, we are trying to be very intentional about creating process. For everyone, for everyone, including in curriculum adoption. So we're moving away from a culture where it was just. Get your part of the money and buy the book that you want to read. To now a very systemic process for how that should look. Because ultimately, the board will be responsible for the choices that are made in terms of what students are being exposed to. In their classes. So then there's odds because it's different. Some concern, we'll call it, uh, because we have changed process, we've changed the system, uh, for how that is done. But I think, uh, given our current context and how materials taught school can be. Uh, very controversial, uh, at times. Uh, in order to give a teacher top cover and the administrators attempting to back them up for that choice, top cover. Before that the board is involved. So while we can look at the semantics clearly of how policy. I think overarching approach that we're taking here is, if there's any chance of something. Either not being appropriate or being controversial, um, the board should have a say in whether those materials. So it's part of this overall shift that we're on. And obviously very open to collaborating to figure out how we can express that with enough already policy.
And I agree with that sentiment completely. But again, going back to this, saying that, that the teacher picked a book that had whatever topic on it. That someone might, whether it's suicide or. A, a hundred other things that people, someone are, could be touchier, uncomfortable for people to talk about. We just said if you put it on a book list that, that has, you know, fifty, two hundred, however many books. And maybe one could fix it, that that would be a resource. So again, and you're saying that not then what you just said, we're trying to have cover. So those books should come to the board and follow that path regardless. So this is where it's getting murky. Or for me, it's getting murky. So, um, Erm and I, if you can tell, having more conversations about this and we both are going like this. And I, I, I still feel like I'm going like that. And if I'm the only one, then.
I feel like reading this doesn't answer the question either way of what we're doing. Either way, yeah, it doesn't say my, my book I'm listening to, it needs to be approved by the board or it doesn't say. I can use this book, whatever I want. Yeah, because it's not now what we're trying.
I think either way, you're bringing it to the attention of the board principal. Who's going to be able to facilitate what happens next depending on a whole host of variables that may be considered. Versus while we've done initial in this district, it was five books and start teaching it.
Yeah, that doesn't sound good either. I don't want that.
Yeah, um, okay. Moving on, so we're going to pull it, we'll look at it in November. And see where we go. Um, can I please have a motion to approve our, our calendar, consent.
I need a motion of the Williamson Board of Education for the minutes of the regular meeting held at.
Second.
So I have a first Sarah, second Heather, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That in concurrence, we do have a roll call vote for the approval of the board part, but no. Um, okay. So I have a question about this. Can I have a motion to move to do a roll call, please?
Take a motion that the Williamson Community School Board of Education awarded contract to the federal medics. Working in Allen County, Michigan to provide full path mechanical equipment for the community floor. At a cost not to exceed three hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Okay, so I have a first Deb, second Sarah, um, any other discussion? I just have a question. This is the big thing that we have to have a frame that has to come in and pull out.
Yeah, so this is for just the mechanical equipment itself. There's a condenser and a pair of. That will feed the pool period itself for the high school. Does it just the mechanical equipment package and buying it in such a long runtime rate in order to get this installed for next summer? Need to buy it early. Uh, the rest of the package, the installation, the mechanical, logical package, they don't feel that. Coming to hopefully, uh, December eighth or, or, or three months. But this is just for the two pieces of equipment itself.
And these are big things, they're big.
Uh, yeah, one is like a condensing unit that was up on group, one is, it's large. Side needs tables, double, with the need that's the size of three, three tables.
So are we going to get this equipment and then have it installed kind of quickly or do we have to store it?
No, yeah, I put all the storage down there. I think it's done early, which it looks like it might, um, that's the goal for them to be done early and just sit at their. So we're waiting to, it is the. So it's June, June, June last day of school, June. I do want to give Andrew credit. He's, he's worked really hard to move this process up. Because we discovered initially that the lead time for the actual home that you're looking at for week nine, uh, was around like twenty-six weeks. And so, um, it might be sooner than that hopefully, but he had to really push on the timeline to get this front loaded. Little process we've had ordered and then, um, anytime that is probably will be put in next summer.
Alright, any other questions? I'm clear. What this is. Alright, thank you very much.
We need to be sealed, please. Yes, Deborah, yes, Evan?
Yes.
Sarah, yes.
Um, we have separate, uh, other separate action items. Can I have an approval for a.
Second.
Alright, so I have a first Sarah, second Heather, any other, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, can I have our second lead, a motion for our second?
The Williamson Community School Board of Education approved Brian for.
Second.
Alright, we have a first Deb, second Heather, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hi.
Any opposed? Uh, approval of the theater production class?
I make a motion that the Williamson Community School's Board of Education approved Brian the Comet for the high school theater production class.
So I have a first Deb, or a first Heather, second Deb, any other discussion?
It's great.
Yes, yes. I don't know where I am. Are, well, and how did you vote? Are we all in favor of this?
Yes.
We didn't vote, yeah, alright, thank you.
Um, approval of the, uh, overnight and out of state.
No, we have to approve the theater.
No, you're all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. You have me completely flustered. It's not good luck and we have people here. Uh, okay, approval of the middle school overnight, not a state field trips, please, a motion.
Make a motion that the Williamson Community School's Board of Education approved the middle school and high school overnight and out of state field trips requested.
Second.
First Sarah, second Heather, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approval of the superintendent's evaluation. I have voted, please.
Assigned Dr. Adam Skinner for the standard and evaluating of.
And second, again. I might need a minute. Uh, so we have first Deb, second Sarah, and we have a discussion.
I, I did contact. Can I have a discussion? I did, I did contact the gentleman in M S B's behind the model. Kind of expressing some of the things that came up at the last meeting about how the weights are constructed. Um, all that, I mean, the long, and that's the way to summarize this. It's designed for a mass audience and as you explained, that's not taken for granted that everybody gets. Like, the results work out the way they might, maybe they've worked out in this case. It doesn't necessarily happen everywhere, so. He was really hesitant about changing the weights for a number of reasons and also validates. I mean, I still have some concerns about research sampling in terms of like. I'll kick a little rigger into those models. Is that great? Um, I'm, um. I know it might sound weird coming from a super parent, but.
There are other models we've played.
There are other models, but I mean, given that, and, and this is obviously your choice in terms of one, one of the options. But, uh, you know, it's M A S D and I don't know. I just use the last, that's very, I just, I was curious and so I had to ask, so.
I think it did, but the last time we used. The superintendent from Eagle, what, he got like an outline from the M A S B and then from Eagle that's what we wanted.
You can, you know, you run some risk with that, but, uh, and I don't, I don't want to be the one to buy it, uh. And, uh, that would be the model, but I, I had to ask the questions. I did have a question.
Alright, well. We have a little approval, so maybe next year we'll have to do some more at less fitting. Um, any other discussion? I didn't have any, but. Over to you. Get under my skin.
But I just think I wouldn't really, I don't think this guy asked me.
There's a lot of work in between the lines, but I think with evaluation systems from top down, from our superintendent administrators, through our staff. That all of those are consistent and that is unfortunate. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You've stuck with us for a little bit longer. Ten more years, I think we said.
At least.
You know, that's why, um. Uh, I think, okay. Can I please? Alright, we do not have any correspondence. Uh, any citizen comments? Okay, board member reports and requests.
I sat in on the M A, M A S P members matter webinar today with over five hundred. Members across states, superintendent board members, all like, and about the state budgets. We were not able to hand that call or where he recorded it and. Go ahead and look at.
I listened to it too. They do a really nice job and break some things down. Um, something you would love to listen. Um, okay, so Adam did, um, send us, there is the city township. Um, meeting that will be held here, October fifteenth at six P M. Um, we, I, they usually do this meeting once a year. We have one person represent. Um, sometimes Adam can go, sometime a board member goes. They usually just go around the, the room and say. What is new and what's happening within your, uh, area. So. So, um, a couple of people have talked about wanting to, Adam is planning on attending, so he will be our representative to speak. Um, please let me know if you do want to attend, just because we can't have one important person there. And I know several people have wanted to, uh, go. So, uh, let me know. Uh. Second, the last thing I want to say is homecoming. I was, um. Able to watch a little bit of it from the, I don't know, what was it? The school, what do they call it? When we were on TV, the school of the week or whatever. That's how, um, some of those students that spoke, most of all of those students that spoke. You know, didn't know what those questions are going to be. They were so elegant and came across so well. That they seemed like. Forty-year-old adults. Yeah, like they, yes. They really represented this district and the high school and even all of us, like, uh. They, then they showed it later, like at the eleven o'clock meetings or eleven thirty or whatever, little bits and pieces of it. And, um, my husband was like, are those the teachers? Like at the very end, uh, Jana Shepherd, I think was one. She was a, she was.
Izzy.
Fan.
Izzy.
Izzy. Is Jana her mom?
Mm-hmm.
She was like. Did very well. They all did very well, so, um, those kids made us look good. So kudos to our high school and students now. Uh, anything else? Okay, reminder, I will not be there at the next board meeting. I will see you back in November. Um, if there isn't anything else, I would say a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Um, so first, is that Sarah? Um, second Deb? Um, okay, next, sorry. I do, we do have another meeting after this. Um, let's take five or ten minutes to go to the bathroom, do whatever you need, and then we'll set up and then we'll start that second meeting.
Sure.
Yeah, all in favor?